Okay. All right. Well, thanks for joining everyone through our study of the Bible and the Virgin Mary. This is the third session. Lesson three, we'll be looking at the wedding feast at Cana in the Garden of Eden. So let us start with a prayer in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
Amen.
All right. We give you thanks Almighty Father for all of your blessings this day through our study of the Bible and the Virgin Mary. This is the third session. There we go. All right. So we give you thanks Almighty Father for all of your blessings this day. We ask that as we study the Blessed Mother in your word, that the Holy Spirit may enlighten us to see her special role in salvation history as the new Eve with the new Adam in the new creation. And trusting our time to you, we pray in the words that your son taught us, "Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil." Amen. So now in this session, we're going to dive in to the famous story of the wedding feast at Cana and see how this event in the Gospel of John is directly connected to the events of the Garden of Eden. We're also going to respond to the accusation often made by non-Catholics that Jesus scolds Mary in a passage in Matthew 12. So let's begin and pray that the technology holds up.
In the 15th and 16th centuries, the native people of Mexico City suffered conquest first by the Aztecs and then by the Spanish conquistadors. It was the custom of the Aztecs to harvest the conquered people as victims for human sacrifice offered to the snake god Quetzalcoatl. By the Aztecs' own account, this cost a quarter of a million human lives per year. In the dedication of just one temple, a celebration lasting four days, they slaughtered more than 80,000 men and women. Now, as you can imagine, these native peoples lived the life of natural and supernatural terror. Yet the fear of their idols kept them trapped in idolatry, and they resisted conversion to the Christian faith. The best efforts of brilliant missionaries proved basically ineffective. Then, in 1531, the Blessed Virgin Mary appeared in Mexico City to a peasant man named Juan Diego. He was an older man, a simple man, a convert to the Catholic faith, and he was hurrying on his way to mass when Our Lady appeared. She asked him to go to the bishop and request that a church be built in her honor on that very spot at Tapayac. The bishop... In the 15th and 16th centuries, the native people of Mexico City suffered conquest first by the Aztecs and then by the Spanish conquistadors. It was the custom of the Aztecs to harvest the conquered people as victims for human sacrifice offered to the snake god Quetzalcoatl. By the Aztecs' own account, this cost a quarter of a million human lives per year. In the dedication of just one temple, a celebration lasting four days, they slaughtered more than 80,000 men and women. Now, as you can imagine, these native peoples lived the life of natural and supernatural terror. Yet the fear of their idols kept them trapped in idolatry, and they resisted conversion to the Christian faith. The best efforts of brilliant missionaries proved basically ineffective. Then, in 1531, the Blessed Virgin Mary appeared in Mexico City to a peasant man named Juan Diego. He was an older man, a simple man, a convert to the Catholic faith, and he was hurrying on his way to mass when Our Lady appeared. She asked him to go to the bishop and request that a church be built in her honor on that very spot at Tapayac. The bishop was skeptical and asked Juan Diego to provide a sign that the vision was authentic. When Juan Diego next saw Our Lady, she filled his overcoat with roses, even though it was winter and roses were out of season. When the bishop took the roses from Juan Diego's rough garment, the men saw that Mary had miraculously left her image on the fabric. Juan Diego's overcoat was made of cactus fiber, so the relic shouldn't have lasted 50 years. And let's be honest, after five years, it should have been falling apart. But now, it's lasted half a millennium, and her image still looks with eyes of mercy upon hundreds of thousands of pilgrims. What happened in the wake of Juan Diego's visitation? Well, the bishop built that church at Tapayac, of course, and soon, nine million Native American people embraced the Christian faith. The entire continent converted to Catholicism. Where the missionaries and the military had failed, a poor man succeeded with the assistance of his Blessed Mother. Mary told Juan Diego, "Am I not here, I who have the honor to be your mother? Are you not in my shadow and under my protection? Are you not in the hollow of my mantle, in the crossing of my arms? Do you need anything more?" Do we need anything more? The Church is calling us to undertake a new evangelization, and the task seems daunting. In fact, it seems downright impossible. But are the obstacles today any greater than they were in 1531 for that man on the hillside of Tapayac? Juan Diego was in his 50s. He was considered an old man, and he'd already outrun his life expectancy. Yet, his evangelistic life was just beginning. And look what he was able to accomplish. Look what God was able to accomplish through him. Look what his mother inspired him to do. What do you suppose is God's plan for you and me? Welcome back to the Bible and the Virgin Mary. In our first couple of lessons together, we learned how to read what Scripture has to say about Mary, both the literal and the deeper meanings of the text. And in order to see the spiritual meaning, we need to understand the connection that exists between the Old and the New Testaments. That connection is God's plan for salvation history. It's His plan to get us to heaven. That plan unfolds through His covenants with His people. Now, all the covenants of the Old Testament, the covenants that God made with Adam, Noah, Abraham, Moses, and David, they pointed to and they prepared people for the new covenant in Jesus Christ. This connection between the Old and the New covenants is made clear through the use of something called typology. Now, typology recognizes that people, places, and events of the Old Testament are actually signs that point the way toward Christ and His saving work. Over the next couple of lessons, we're going to put the techniques we've learned to work by focusing on one of the three gospel scenes where Mary plays a prominent role: the wedding at Cana. As you read through the Gospels, you'll notice that Matthew, Mark, Luke, and John tell many of the same stories about Jesus. For example, all four report the story of the Last Supper. Similarly, all four Gospels tell the story of Jesus's baptism. But the few stories involving Mary are a little different. Each one is unique to the gospel that records it. Only Luke, for instance, tells the story of the Annunciation. Matthew alludes to it, but gives no details. Mark and John, they don't even talk about it at all. Likewise, the event we'll study in this lesson, the wedding feast at Cana, is only found in John's Gospel. So let's start with the actual account in John 2:1-11.
On the third day, there was a marriage at Cana in Galilee, and the mother of Jesus was there. Jesus also was invited to the marriage with His disciples. When the wine failed, the mother of Jesus said to him, "They have no wine." And Jesus said to her, "O woman, what are ye to do with me? My hour has not yet come." His mother said to the servants, "Do whatever he tells you." Now six stone jars were standing there for the Jewish rites of purification, each holding 20 or 30 gallons. Jesus said to them, "Fill the jars with water," and they filled them up to the brim. He said to them, "Now draw some out and take it to the steward of the feast." So they took it. When the steward of the feast tasted the water now become wine and did not know where it came from, though the servants who had drawn the water knew. The steward of the feast called the bridegroom and said to him, "Every man serves the good wine first, and when men have drunk freely, then the poor wine. But you have kept the good wine until now." This, the first of his signs Jesus did at Cana in Galilee, manifested His glory, and His disciples believed in Him.
Now, at first glance, the story seems pretty straightforward. Jesus turns water into wine, and Mary is the one who calls this attention to the fact that this wine has run short. But again, as we discovered previously, when it comes to scriptural references to Mary, there's always more there than meets the eye. Now, the first clue that tells us we should be looking for a deeper meaning is the story's opening words, "on the third day." The third day from what? These words point us back to what has already occurred in the Gospel. Basically, the Cana story marks the conclusion of a series of events that began in John's first chapter. John begins his Gospel with a kind of recapping of the creation story found in the Bible's first book. His first words are the same as the first words of Genesis, "in the beginning." Also, just as the first verses of Genesis describe God creating light and separating it from the darkness, so John's first verses describe Jesus as a light shining in the darkness. In the creation account in Genesis 1, we hear of the Spirit of God moving over the face of the waters. John, in turn, shows the Spirit hovering above the waters of baptism. And just as Genesis begins by telling us about what happens on each one of the seven days of creation, John seems to narrate an account of a new creation week, and he does this with a Genesis-like repetition of the words "the next day." The first event in the Gospel of John happens on day one. It's the introduction of John the Baptist in John 1:19-28. Then, on the next day, so day two, John sees the Spirit descending on Jesus at his baptism in verses 29-34. "On the next day after that," says John, "day three," Jesus calls Simon Peter to follow Him in verses 35-42. And on the next day after that, day four, Jesus finds Nathaniel, who then becomes one of the 12 apostles, resting under a fig tree in verses 43-51. So what happens on the fifth day? Well, we don't know. John skips right over the fifth and the sixth days, picking up his account on the seventh day. And he signals that it's the seventh day at the beginning of chapter two with the words, "on the third day, there was a marriage." Now, the only way that sentence makes any sense is if we understand it in the context of all the other days that have come before. Those are the days signaled to us by John's repeated use of the phrase "the next day." So if we have a clue into what John has been doing when we start reading chapter two, we're left asking, "On the third day since what, John?" But reading those words in context, we see that John is saying "on the third day" since the last day we mentioned, which was day four. Then, doing a little basic math, and I don't want to stretch anybody here, but you add four plus three, and that tells us that what is described as the third day is actually the seventh day of that new creation week. Now, what's the point of this? John is using the seven-day structure to show us that the coming of Jesus into the world marks a new creation. And in this new creation, a new people of God is to be born by faith in Jesus and by the power of water and spirit in baptism. And importantly, it's on the seventh day of this new creation that Mary makes her appearance. And this is no coincidence. If you look back at Genesis 1, Adam and the animals were created on the sixth day. Now, after the man finished naming the animals and after he realized there was no helper fit for him among the beasts, he fell into a deep sleep. And while he slept, Genesis 2:21-22 tells us that woman was formed from his side. Now, the ancient rabbis believed that Adam's sleep marked the passing of the sixth day. Accordingly, they also believed that it was on the seventh day when Adam awoke, and that's when he met his bride, Eve, which would mean that in the first creation account, the woman also appears for the first time on the seventh day. So Eve appears on the seventh day, and Mary appears on the seventh day. It's also important to note that in Genesis, the seventh day is the pinnacle of creation. It's when creation is completed, sanctified, and perfected. The seventh day, as the Book of Exodus tells us, was instituted as an everlasting sign of God's perpetual covenant with creation.
Therefore, the sons of Israel shall keep the Sabbath, observing the Sabbath throughout their generations as a perpetual covenant. It is a sign forever between me and the sons of Israel that in six days, the Lord made heaven and earth, and on the seventh day, He rested and was refreshed.
Now, the Greek Old Testament word that is translated there as "sign" also makes an appearance in John's story. John describes Jesus's miracle as the beginning of his signs. What that tells us is that the seventh day in John's creation account is the new Sabbath. It's the sign of the new creation and the new covenant. Additionally, Mary's presence on this Sabbath tells us that she is part of the sign of God's new and everlasting covenant with His creation. All right, before we take a closer look at Mary's role in this new creation, we've got to understand her son's role. And you have to do this because you cannot separate Jesus and Mary. For John, as for the other writers of the New Testament, Christ is the new Adam. He's come to undo the damage done by the first Adam. And throughout the Gospels, we see parallels drawn between the two. Luke shows us that Adam was called to be the firstborn son of God in creation, and Jesus is the Son of God, the firstborn of the new creation. Adam was created sinless. "Jesus is conceived without sin," says Hebrews 4:15. Adam was called to have royal dominion over creation, and Jesus is the true King of Kings, says Revelation 19:16. Called to till and keep the garden, priestly duties given to the Levites later on, Adam was to serve as the high priest of all of creation. And Jesus is our true high priest, says Hebrews 8:1. "Adam was the covenant representative of all of humanity in God's first covenant with man," says St. Paul. That's why we're all affected by his fall and original sin. And Jesus is the covenant representative of all of humanity in the new covenant. That's why we're all saved by Christ's work on the cross. So you see, the writers of the New Testament all understood that Jesus was the new Adam, the one who had come to right what the first Adam had wronged. And John in particular understood that if there was going to be a new Adam, there also needed to be a new Eve. So he understood the pattern of salvation history. In his Gospel, he shows us who that new Eve is. So let's look a little more closely at how he does this. Notice that in the creation story, only the name of God is spoken. The first man and the first woman are not identified by name, but simply as "the man" and "the woman." Well, the Cana story is similar. Notice that only Jesus, God, is referred to by name. Mary never is. John refers to her as "the mother of Jesus," and Jesus calls her "woman." This is another indicator that John intends for us to find a deeper symbolic connection between what happens at Cana and the Genesis story. And we should keep that deeper meaning in view as we try to understand what seem to be the more difficult passages in the account. Now, the most infamous of these so-called difficult passages is Jesus's response to Mary when she informs him about the shortage of wine. "O woman, what have you to do with me? My hour has not yet come," he says in John 2:4. Now, lots of times, non-Catholics use this text in their attempts to prove that Catholic devotion to Mary is unscriptural. So they try to argue that Jesus obviously distances himself from Mary in this passage, and he even seems to scold her. You know, like, "Leave me alone, woman," as if she just asked him to cut the lawn or something. This interpretation, however, doesn't hold up to careful study. Now, perhaps to our modern ears, Jesus sounds like he's telling Mary to go mind her own business. But we've got to remember that this Gospel wasn't written in English. It was written in Greek and recounts a dialogue that originally took place in a Hebrew dialect. The actual words Jesus uses, literally "what to me and you," were a figure of speech common in the Greek and Hebrew of his day. That figure of speech has several shades of meaning in the Old and the New Testaments. And yes, it sometimes refers to a situation where someone is reluctant to do something when there's a simple disagreement or maybe even hostility. But there are also times when that phrase is used to show the consent of one party to the will of another. Now, given the context of the story, this certainly seems to be what's going on at Cana. And those who attempt to use this passage to make it seem like Jesus is angry with his mother or is dismissing her somehow aren't really being true to the text. First, there is no evidence anywhere in John or the rest of the New Testament to suggest that Jesus felt any kind of hostility towards his mother. Remember, Jesus was without sin, so he was faithful to the fourth commandment and obeyed his mother and father. There also isn't any evidence in the Cana episode that implies separation or tension between Jesus and Mary. In fact, four times in the story's mere 12 verses, she is referred to as "the mother of Jesus" or "his mother," words which link her closely to her son. Perhaps the best evidence for what Jesus meant is found in Mary's reaction to his words. She turns to the servants and says, "Do whatever he tells you." She certainly doesn't think his words are dismissive. She tells the servants to listen to him, and she expects him to respond to her implied request. And he does. Had Jesus intended to reproach her, would he have complied with her instructions to the servants? The same points apply when non-Catholics attempt to drive a wedge between Jesus and Mary based on the passage where Mary comes looking for him with his brethren while Jesus is teaching in Matthew 12, Mark 3, and Luke 8. Jesus responds to the man who tells him they've come, "Who is my mother, and who are my brethren?" He immediately answers his own question, saying that whoever does the will of the Father in heaven is my brother and sister and mother. Now, we're going to deal with the brethren issue later. But what we need to realize is that Jesus isn't undermining Mary's role as his natural mother. Rather, he's exalting her divine maternity. She is the one who completely gave herself over to the will of God and thus became not just Jesus's natural mother, but the mother of God. As such, she's also the mother of all those joined to Christ, his adopted brothers and sisters. She's our mother. That's all we have time for right now. But in our next lesson, we'll continue our focus on the wedding at Cana and show how by calling Mary "woman" throughout this passage, St. John's actually connecting her to the woman who appears in the Book of Revelation as well as the woman in the Garden of Eden. And by doing so, we're going to come to a new understanding of why Mary has been called the new Eve from the earliest days of the Church. And until then, God bless you.
All right. That should be better. Okay. Good deal. Well, I don't know if that was any better or not.
I think it was better. Yeah, let's think maybe the...
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's... I've got to work out a few of the kinks, but we could certainly do it that way. That's not a problem. Okay. So how are we doing so far? Okay?
Okay.
All right. All right, good. So we can do a review of the previous lesson where we talked about... Look, like Matthew introduces Mary as a virgin betrothed to Joseph and the son of David. And we also hear that the angel Gabriel greets her with the words "hail, full embrace." So throughout the last lesson, you're really kind of introduced it to Luke's account and some of the... Some of the concepts like typology and that sort of thing are being brought forward. So... Why don't we go to the review questions? If everybody's been kind of paying attention. And we... And we'll start with... I can't get to it this time, I'm sorry. But so... The first question, what parallels does John use in the first chapter of his Gospel to show that the coming of Jesus is a new creation? I thought that was... I always thought that was pretty ingenious on John's part. And it took a little while for me to work that out until I really saw this. So what parallels does John use? Has anybody got anything down for that?
By using the numbers of the days, as did in the Book of Genesis.
Yep.
So there's parallels there.
All right, the first words of Genesis, right?
Right.
And then going forward. Very good. That's great. Who else has got something?
It is also for the first man creation of Adam, and Jesus, the first man of the new creation.
He's drawing the parallel between the two, right?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. Who else? Yeah, it was showing, giving us a kind of a foretaste of baptism, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, very good. That's great. So the second question then, on what day of John's new creation does Mary appear?
Seventh day.
Seventh day.
Seventh day. Why do we think that's important?
Because that's when God created Eve.
Right.
Seventh day. So that's the reason why Blessed Mother appeared, she said, on the seventh day of the new creation.
Right. So the number seven has always been seen as perfection, right? So just about anything that happens on the seventh day, as far as God is concerned, is quite perfect, don't you think? I think that's fairly significant. But he also had said that, it says that he rested on that day, and it was all good. Right, so that's great. So we... What's that?
I said, Mary also, I'm thinking about when Adam slept and Mary was created. Wasn't that on the seventh day that Mary was...
Yeah, Adam fell into a deep sleep. So that was seen as like evening of the sixth day.
Right.
Right, sure. And it's interesting because that's how the... That's how the Hebrews measure... because that's how the Hebrews measure time. They measure the day, right? So we have Mass after sundown technically on Saturday. And of course, that's why it counts on Sunday, because we measure time the same way they do. Or they still do in some cases. So what are some parallels then between Christ and Adam? And we mentioned a few. And we talked, we mentioned there part of it in the first question.
Yeah. Adam is a high priest, but Jesus is the true... The true and real priest. That's one of the... And then a royal... Adam is firstborn, but Jesus is the firstborn of God. The only Son of God.
Sure. So Adam is actually created sinless, right? And who else is created without sin?
Blessed Mother.
Jesus. And while the Blessed Mother, through her immaculate conception, was saved from the stain of sin, but she is a creation. And we talked about that a little bit before. She was not conceived without sin, but she is the immaculate conception. She was saved from the stain of sin at the very moment of her conception. That's part of the doctrine of the immaculate conception, right? But Adam is created sinless, and Jesus, of course, is indeed conceived without sin, right?
Yes.
And Jesus came to fix what Adam destroyed.
Yes.
Right. Yeah, he fixed what he broke. That's right. Adam, yeah, and there's a note here too. Adam is the covenant representative of all humanity, God's first covenant with mankind. Interesting that there was a very first covenant right at the beginning of creation. And as you mentioned now, Jesus came to fix what was broken in the new covenant that he created for us. So absolutely. So the fun one, when Jesus says, "Oh, woman, what have you to do with me", is he scolding his mother then?
No.
No.
How come?
Because that's our interpretation. The interpretation was... You know, and it was, when it was translated, it was translated, it was originally written in...
Greek.
In the Greek, which means that's kind of a... That's kind of an agreement. And it really alludes to an agreement between those two people.
Right. So a Greek translation of the original Hebrew, because they spoke Hebrew, but the gospel was written in Greek, certainly. And yeah, it sounds kind of crazy to us. But the parallel is being drawn then also between the woman, Eve, who was only called woman. She didn't have a name yet. And now Jesus is calling his own mother "woman".
Oh, I never put those two together. But also, it's, you know, it's stated about the, you know, about Jesus would not disobey or dishonor his own mother because he would follow the commandments as well.
Sure. Oh, he was a good... He was, right, he was a good Jewish boy and listened to his mother. You betcha. Oh, yeah.
Yes. Jesus has no sin, that's what's said. He will not... He doesn't have any sin, so he has to be obedient to the fourth commandment, obeying parents.
Right, which he knew very well. Right, exactly right. Yeah, very good. Boy, you guys are honest. Absolutely. So now some... Sorry, go ahead.
I said we are paying attention, I think.
All right, well, there you go. Hey, that's a good...
I think I figured out what the hell this is going now.
Well...
Although I do have to say, I have one thing to say. Today at Mass, I was gonna stand up and tell the priest he was using typology. And I know he was doing it, but I don't remember what he said.
Well, sometimes you wonder if he knows he was doing it. You know? I don't know.
Yeah, that's true.
Sometimes they do it, sometimes they don't. Hard to say.
And at the beginning of this, at the beginning of this video, I felt like we were doing core math. Studying common core math.
Sister Anna, you're doing typology too.
What?
I said you are doing typology too, because you are referencing also what we learned to your... To the math.
I did. I was like, oh my gosh. Let me write down all these numbers. We're doing a math problem. This is not gonna be good.
There will be a test later.
When I go to bed.
Right through your head. Look at that, typology. Go figure, right? Boy, you guys are...
You're gonna use that, Sister Anna, on a priest, and he's gonna say, "Type what?"
Yeah. "I threw out my typewriter years ago." That's what he's gonna say. Oh, yeah. Well, and that'll be good too. You'll have to let us know how that comes. So some of our discussion questions. Why do you think Mary first approached Jesus about the shortage of wine in the first place?
Well, I think...
She knew he could fix it.
Well, but in the Jewish tradition, to be out of wine is like a big faux pas. It's like, you know, that's like the worst thing that you, that can happen.
Right.
Mary would have known that, and so she went to the man that she knew could fix it.
That would do something.
Yeah, I think also too, so that they wouldn't be embarrassed.
Mm-hmm. You suppose that she... You think that she might have known the couple that was getting married, her parents?
Oh, I'm sure.
They do, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because otherwise, what businesses of hers, right?
Yes.
Well, otherwise, she wouldn't have been invited to the wedding if she didn't know who they were.
She wouldn't crush it with...
She wasn't a wedding crasher.
I was just gonna say that, Sister Jo.
I disagree.
Blessed Mother's a wedding crasher.
I'll tell you what. Weddings were such a big deal, it's hard not to crash one. You know what I'm saying? You just walk down the street and you're in it.
Well, in the villages, the way the villages were, everybody knew everybody. So I'm sure, you know, it was just... Yeah.
Nazareth's a small town, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those are there, sure. You know, the drugstore, the pharmacy. Sure. Yeah, they use hardware there, you know?
Yeah.
It's kind of neat too to think about Mary and Jesus being at a wedding. You know, it puts... It kind of puts them in normalcy, like we can relate to them, you know, because we go to weddings, so... Kind of neat that way.
Well, I think of the Chosen series, right? And I know most everybody has seen it. If you haven't, then it's time to get caught up. But they do the wedding feast of Cana there, one of the episodes. And it's really kind of cool to see him, you know, palling around and enjoying himself, Jesus, you know, instead of just, you know, how we might picture him. So like you say, it just kind of shows them as just regular folks at times. And so why do you think then she gave the instructions to the servants that she did? I mean, she just up and said, "Well, do whatever he tells you."
She had perfect faith that he was gonna handle it.
Yeah, she knew that he was gonna take care of it.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
At faith.
And I think she knew that it was his time for the miracle to happen. I think she, you know, she had something from the Holy Spirit saying, "This is time for your first miracle." It's kind of like giving him permission to start his public ministry.
Mama always...
I have heard that too.
It's a fiction, because Mary was hiding her from the world in the beginning. Now, you know, it's gonna lead to Calvary.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but that's what I'm saying.
But then, doesn't it make sense then that he would say, "How is this? It's not yet my time"?
Yeah, but remember, that's not the... That's not really, that's a bad translation. It's basically, "What to you, what to me and you"? So basically, that's meaning consent from one party to the will of the other. So he's consenting to her, saying, "Okay, yep, we're starting this now. Now it starts."
He does say earlier that, "Well, my hour has not yet come." So, you know, there is something to be said for listening to his mom.
Right.
Because his mother knew from the beginning that there's something special about him, right?
Right.
You know, so we get that from the presentation in the temple. So, and of course, the whole Holy Spirit overshadowing her thing. Well, she knew something special from this very start, right? I don't know that she could have known when his time was, apart from, as we're pointing out, you know, some nudge from the Holy Spirit. But even Jesus himself says, "My hour has not yet come."
But then she, but after he says that, after he says that, she persists. And then she tells the servants to do whatever he tells her, and that's when he submits and does the miracle.
I'm gonna... Yeah, so I'm gonna throw something out too. That this is one of the examples that we should take in perseverance of prayer, number one. And number two, the power of intercessory prayer. And then, you know, we take and see, if Jesus decides that, yep, that's God, this is what's going to happen, okie dokie, that's part of the plan, then we often run it, right? So I think that's kind of how we can tie that together.
You know, I think, you know, when Jesus says, "My hour has not yet come", the hour obviously is, you know, when he was crucified, right? That's when he becomes king. And then Mary throws the sweep is to ask the king, right? So like in the Old Testament with Shiva and Solomon, where he was always asking the king. So that's what, I thought that was the meaning when he said, "My hour has not yet come". So when this hour came, when he was crucified, then Mary throws to ask at that time, because...
Yeah. Yeah, it seems to, I've always felt that his hour was when he was to reveal who he was. And not necessarily on the cross, because that was the coming. He gave us pointers along the way, as we've been hearing on the Gospels these last few weeks. He was letting us know what was going to happen and by what sort of deaths he was going to have. It's crucifixion, right? You know, the sign of the serpent being raised up on the pole that Moses had, you know, the sign that Moses had to produce. So all of these things, so he's been letting us know that his hour, that hour is coming. But I, it seems to me that he had to reveal his hour to where he was beginning to reveal who he was.
Like his public ministry?
Yes, because this is...
And how better to roll it out than a miracle? So people are like, you know, who is this?
And who would, and how many people would recognize it as a miracle? So how many people really knew that this is what Jesus did, apart from his mom? So...
The servants. The servants who filled the, who filled the jugs.
Yeah, the servants, people who filled the jugs, right? Were they there in the room when Jesus performed the sign?
Yes. Aren't they?
Are they?
We don't know, I guess.
Hey, maybe the servants were like the apostles.
Instead of apostles, they're guests.
Yeah, well, so...
They were, they, maybe they witnessed the miracle.
It's hard to say. We're not really told if they witnessed the miracle or not. But the steward, the steward of the feast pronounced that it was really good wine. So they might, the servants may not have been in the room when it happened, but they knew because they're the ones that filled the water charts, right?
Right.
That wasn't widely known. So it was beginning to be known, slow but sure.
And then they said, Deacon, then they said, then, then, then they said, "Bring, bring a cup of the water, the wine to the steward." Now, was that, would that have been a normal circumstance? Do you think that they would?
Well, sure. I mean, all of a sudden, there's wine there. He's going to, they're going to, he's asking the steward of the feast to test it. Jesus is asking that. "All right, okay, pour the water", and whether they knew anything had happened or not, they may not have seen a change.
Right.
All of a sudden, well, now you gotta pour it out. Well, they pour it out, and they give it to the steward. I don't know.
So why would they, why would they have to give it to the steward? Is that like the bartender?
That's the, he's kind of the bar, he's the guy in charge of the festivities, right? He's the MC.
Okay.
Yeah, so in those big wedding feasts, you had some kind of charge of, you know, the wedding planner.
Okay.
Yeah, you had that with, he's the guy. And that makes sure everything is, you know, where it's supposed to be.
He was a wedding planner.
A wedding planner. Yeah, he's a wedding planner. Yeah, you betcha. I mean, the wedding went on for a week. I mean, you gotta, you gotta know what you're doing.
That's a lot, that's a lot of wine, too.
It's a lot of wine.
No wonder they ran out.
That's their water.
Well, and that's why they serve the worst, the last, the worser wine or the lesser wine towards the end, towards the end of the week.
Yeah, they've gone down, they've gone down on a couple of gallons of Gallo, you know, or something.
No, they're the box, they're the box wine. Right, right. No, they're the box, they're the box wine.
Right, the box wine, yeah.
It's the box wine now.
Yeah, right, that's what they've done. Yeah, they've, they've gone to art, yeah.
Joan, you're not drinking box wine, are ya? Joan, you're not drinking box wine, are ya?
No, no, no.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
Oh, did you throw this back?
I did.
Yeah.
Or he's trying to push his back together.
Yeah, she's got
I bought a wine.
Yeah, she's got, she's got a bottle of Cana grapes, right?
Must it all?
Yeah, right. Yeah, that's it, nobody, yeah, you're not
I got, I got some water, Joan, let's see if we can recreate.
Good luck with that.
I wore my breath.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Somebody's offer has not yet come, right?
You know, I wanna, I wanna go, I wanna go back to, um, I wanna go back to, uh, to, uh, woman, this is not my time. I ha- I hate to go back. But why can't, why didn't they put in, why didn't they translate it in the Bible to where you could understand it better?
Well, you'd have to talk to those.
Good luck with that. When you get out there, Anna, ask them.
Yeah, right.
When you get up there.
Yeah, talk to, uh, yeah, talk to the guys that put the, you know, the American Bible.
Maybe that's my mission.
In the next life.
Yeah, you'll be
Next life.
Yeah, you need to look for King James, that guy. Go find him, and then you can, you'll, you'll figure it out.
I'll tell ya, as, as a mother, when my son calls me woman, I just like laugh at him.
Yeah, who do you think you are?
Yeah. But actually, it's the for- it's the highest form of compliment, so
Yes.
I'm not sure I'd laugh, but, you know.
Well, it is now, based on this, right?
Right, that's how, and from now on, Anna, that's what, how you're gonna take it?
Yes, I am.
Yes, my child.
Yes, yeah.
Deacon, in the wedding of Cana, isn't it some of the apostles were there too?
Yeah.
That's why, yeah, that's the reason why they said that they believe on him, they start to believe on
Yeah, there were only a few. There weren't, I think it was only like three or four. It wasn't many.
Yes. Hmm. Only few, few, like that.
Okay. Well, so, so how, how are we doing? Good so far? I, I froze up here.
No, we're good.
Okay. Is it re- so then the next discussion question, I think we've kind of already walked on this, but is it reasonable to think then that Jesus would never be disrespectful to, uh, to his mother?
No.
Never.
No.
I think
Yes, we bet you that, so.
If he's modeling up for us, he would never be disrespectful to her.
I, I, I have a, I have something to, to ask you, Deacon. So, um, when I assist at a, at a baptism, uh, there's, there's a certain Deacon that, that really emphasizes that the Holy Family was not the perfect family, right?
Sure.
I know. So, and it, it just throws me off, and he tells them the Holy Family is, was not the perfect family. And I really think that that's not right. Do you think that that's right to say something like that?
Why does he say that?
I'm not sure why he would say that, although
He would use that for the, for the families to be holy, right, to, to realize that they're gonna fall or whatever.
Reverse psychology.
That's not a good comparison, though. I wouldn't use that.
I would certainly, I certainly wouldn't use it that way, you know? I mean, I, yeah. To say that, to say that I'm gonna guess that he's just saying that, well, every, they're all a creation. Though there is, there is some sinful parts there somewhere, but the Blessed Mother is, is the Immaculate Conception. So we, in our doctrine, we say that she is, you know, she had committed no sin. Saint Joseph, you know, that's another, but you know, he certainly wasn't, you know, part of the Immaculate Conception at all, and is a sinful, uh, sinful man, just like the rest of us. But if he's, so I think it's an incomplete example. When I, when I talk to folks about baptism, either in class or even at the baptism itself, I don't necessarily use the Holy Family. I bring in the Trinity, because when we're baptized, we are brought into the family that is the Trinity. And that runs through us, as part of baptism. So I, you know, the Holy Family, the Holy Family is a picture, is a model of a family. With all its struggles and everything else, because, I mean, they had real world issues to deal with. I mean, perhaps that's what he's alluding to, but maybe he's not explaining himself, maybe, uh, I'll get better at talking about that.
Because Saint Joseph is just, he's oh, he's above the angels.
Well, he's a just
Below Mary, and he's above the angels, so it's like you're gonna have the most perfect family there is.
Yeah, well, there's
Well, and all, aren't all the saints above the angels? Aren't all of us, when we become saints, aren't we above the angels as well?
Saint Joseph is above the angels and the saints.
So he is now. He wasn't, he wasn't
That's the point.
So, so let's, let's keep things in perspective, okay?
Okay.
Joseph is still a creation like all of us, right?
Right.
How is this, absolutely.
Yeah.
And so the Blessed Mother is, although she, we profess her Immaculate Conception, so there's a distinction. And Jesus, of course, is created without sin, he's God himself. So to speak about the Holy Family, I think during the day to day, if that's what he's talking about, sure, struggles, I mean, they had to make sure he worked, they had to eat, all this stuff. You know, they had to, they had to leave their house, I mean, they were persecuted when Jesus was born, you had to go to Egypt, then you, yeah, okay.
And, and the other thing, and the other thing is uh, the other thing is, when they say, like, not a perfect family, when Jesus disappeared, it was gone for three days, and they followed in the temple, you know, and she was distraught, and she couldn't find him, you know, and had to go back, you know?
So these are, yeah, these are the foibles of a normal family, right? We run across. So in that way, yeah, sure, the things weren't, they weren't perfect when, when things happened, but on the other side, is that now we recognize, you know, who Saint Joseph and, and the Blessed Mother are, and of course, Jesus. So I find it more helpful to talk about the family that we are baptized in, and that is the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, which is a picture of the family, right? Father, who is the beloved. The lover, the, the son, who is the beloved. And that love that is so strong between the two of them creates a third, and that's the Holy Spirit. So when man and a woman come together in marriage and matrimony, the str- the love, the strength, the bond between them is so strong, it creates a third, and that's the child. So now, that family is, the picture is completed now, uh, in a, in a larger, in a, in a much more perfect way, because we are now baptized, we are now baptized into the Holy, into the Trinity, which is a family. So, Anna, does that, does that help at all?
I think it does. Yeah, I think I need to call him and not straighten him out, but just to ask, tell him that I'm, I'm confused, you confused me about that, yeah. He's a wonderful guy.
And if you're confused, are the families that he's speaking, that's a little confused.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I mean, it's, it's, you know, I, that's just me, I, that, that's kind of where I take it. I don't know if that's or worse, but it seems to make sense, make sense to me. So that it seems to help out most people, so I don't know what his perspective is.
Maybe he just needs to clarify.
I think that, I think that's all, because you can probably take it any number of ways. That, I think, when there's ambiguity in that way, I think that causes some issues. Just ask him to clarify and see what's going on. And then if it's, it's all right, then you can, you know, take him out of the knees or something, you know? So that, so, okay. So if that's helpful, then
Yes, very much so, and I'm glad, because I've always wanted to ask that question. I guess I should ask him, but I'll call him.
Yeah, I mean, see what he's got to say, you know, and, I mean, I'm, hard for me, I'm not interested in throwing anybody under the bus or anything, because I don't know, you know, I
Yes.
That's just my
And you know what? He may have said it in a different way, and I just took it a different way, you know, you never know.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just ask for clarification, you know, go from there. That's all. All right, so how are we doing? Any other questions? Comments?
You know, I did, I did wanna make a comment. Hold on, because I took notes this time. Hold on. Oh, first of all, um, when they were talking about Juan Diego, I did not know that he was considered an old man, because, you know, they, when they paint him, he looks younger. So that was interesting, and, uh, fifties to me is really not that old, but back then it was. Um, and it's, yeah, and it's a hard, you know, when you try to explain the, the roses to children today, it's a really hard thing for them to understand, you know, because we have florists and, and roses, or you can get any kind of flower any time of the year, so that's one that, you know, you have to really, uh, work on. And then the final thing was, when they talked about, um, um, sacrificing, um, people for, for the God, for the God.
Oh, yeah. I know, offerings.
Yeah, we have the same thing here now, that we're sacrificing these babies, we're for, for, for the devil. I mean, it's no different now, you know, it's crazy.
Right? Oh, no, Ed, it's
Blessed Mother fixed it last time, and maybe she's gonna have to come back and do it again.
I tell ya.
Well, it's, it took them ten years in Mexico, uh, which, I guess, in, in the, in the long, I mean, that's a long time, but, you know, they the conquerors and everybody else, the monks and the priests that came over, they couldn't convert, they couldn't convert a fly, but it took the Blessed Mother in the space of ten years to get the, an entire country of five million people or whatever it was, at that time, uh, to, uh, to experience a conversion, so, um, so yeah, it's gonna take her, once again, uh, to, to straighten this madness out. I we were having a discussion, Father and I, the other day, and I, I mentioned something about, you know, pagan culture. He said, well, what, what is pagan to you? I says, well, I think it's really not not a Christian or monotheistic, uh, religion. And I pointed to, you know, the very things, the Incas, the Mayas, uh, in Mexico, where they sacrificed literally, or what the hearts of, beating the hearts of people that were alive, sacrificing to the gods. So I mean, this is, this is, uh, something that we, we for those who forget their history are doomed to repeat it. And this is what's going on now. So you're exactly right on. Uh, this is no different than what, what those, those Indian, those people did. Absolutely.
Can I say something more about those roses?
Yeah, hmm, what's that?
The, okay, so the bishop was from Spain. And the roses were Castilian roses that only grew in a very specific part of Spain.
Right.
So when he saw those roses, and that really touched his heart. He knew it was a miracle, plus, you know, the tilma with the
Right, is, do you, have you noticed any other, there's a, to me, there's a parallel to that apparition. There's another apparition that kind of worked very similar. Does anyone know what it might be?
What? In lords?
In lords. So, the priest, the priest didn't, didn't pay attention to what Saint, what Saint Bernadette, right? Until he asked the question, what was her name?
Oh.
What did she say her name was?
I am the Immaculate
Immaculate Conception.
So the priest would know that. She did, Saint Bernadette didn't know that. She wasn't educated, she had no idea what that meant. But he got the message that, so the priest would understand, and the next thing you know, shrines were being built and a whole line of So the same thing. I've, I've seen it that way, so that's, you know, the, the roses had to convince the bishop that, you know, the shrine or church was going to
You know, and isn't it interesting that Mary always seems to appear to the lot, young, very young or uneducated, so that they don't add their own little like, uh, aside to things, you know, they're not gonna add, like, she could have said, uh, instead of saying, I am the Immaculate Conception, somebody might say, oh, that doesn't sound right. I think I'll say, um, I am, you know, similar to, or, you know, just add her, add her own words. They said exactly what they should have said.
Yes.
In order to convince, in order to convince, somebody who needed convincing.
Yeah.
So
Oh, and one final thing about Our Lady of Guadalupe. I've heard so many priests, uh, when it's the Feast of Our Lady of Guadalupe, they always refer her back to the, back to Mexico. You know, and, and, and honestly, I'm Mexican, and I didn't know Our Lady of Guadalupe. I, I always knew Our Lady of Grace. And, and so, so that, to think that, that she only belongs to Mexico, she belongs to the North, she belongs to North America, she belongs to everyone. All of these app, app, apparitions do, right? We need to, we need to venerate all of these apparitions. So I think it's really odd that, that they do that. I just wanted to say that. It, it makes me cringe.
Well, yeah, so I mean, it's just, yeah, to refer back to Mexico, sure, as you point out, is a mistake, I think, too. It's like saying, you know, Our Lady of Knock is only for the Irish, you know, which doesn't make any wrong, so, and nobody really would say that. At least not that I've heard, but because we have such an, we have an influx of, of Hispanic folks, and God bless them for that. I mean, we have the Shrine of Our Lady of Guadalupe right here in Displanes. Uh, you know, so that's, you know, that's how people are connecting the dots. Well, the Hispanics are, it's a Hispanic thing. Well, no, it's not. It's what happened, but it's for all of us. Am I not who am your mother? What, just him? No, no, it's just, it's all of us. Because she, you know, she says that throughout, um, from, we were given her from the cross. Those are the same words, right? It was given to us as our mother from, by Jesus. She's just repeating that. Am I not here who am your mother, right? Jesus gave me to you guys. What are you doing, right? Absolutely. So, yeah, no, that's, that's, that's a good call, and it's, until we kind of learned what was going on either, we didn't know what was happening. And it's like, well, okay, now it makes, now it makes more sense, because we were seeing that the pilgrimages actually came right by the house here, and we didn't know, what are they doing, these people? They're, they're on their way to Displanes, uh, the Pearly Green. And, uh, you know, we, they were coming down the street, had crosses and music and all this stuff, it's like, what is going on? And then we found out, so, uh, yeah, it's, it's really quite, really quite something. The patroness of the Americas, absolutely, that is right, well, great. This is, this has been wonderful. How are you guys doing, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, sounds good. So let's, we'll have our, our, our closing prayer, and also our memory verse uh, that we have here, John, chapter two, verse five, do whatever he tells you. But whatever Jesus wants to do, that's for us to do, right? Amen?
Amen.
Good.
Right, so, amen to the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
Lord, we are grateful to you for giving us such a powerful intercessor in the woman, our Blessed Mother. May she continue to intercede for us when we run out of wine. Let us call on her in the words of the Archangel Gabriel and Saint Elizabeth, as together we pray, Hail Mary, for grace, blessed art thou among women. Blessed is the fruit of thy womb. Holy Mary.
Mary, mother of God, pray for us sinners.
Our Lady Refuge of Sinners, pray for us. The Lord be with you.
And with your spirit.
May almighty God bless you, Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Amen.
Go in peace.
Thanks be to God.
Well, thanks for joining us this evening. We'll be back at it tomorrow night at, uh, seven thirty, and, um, let's see if the technology holds